So let's, let's start the meeting. We've got a few things to deal with. Before we get to the signs. One is the appointment of alternates and we'll appoint. Jackie just to serve for. Guess who my own Donna because Bruce is signing in.
Okay, thank you.
And the first order of business is. The general commission business. I suppose we could go over the minutes, but I don't, they're not on the agenda and you can't do that. They're not on the special meeting. The accessory dwelling unit. Resolution. I drafted, we had a, we have two things up on our, on our drop box. One is the. Memo that. That Laura put together and then after some discussion, I redrafted one. And if we'd like to talk about that, or we can defer it till June, till March 7th, because. Originally it was supposed to be brought up in March 7th. But it is on this agenda.
Well, aren't we just sending it to the board of selectmen?
That's the cover memo, memo, if you will, for the resolution that we passed and.
So I would make.
Reasons why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would tend to agree that. I feel like we've kind of beaten this dead horse a bit. I mean, we've, we've, we've worked it out and found all our things, but I, I, I feel comfortable. Moving forward with this.
Yep.
And I would add that I, I feel comfortable as well.
Me three.
It's what?
I said me three.
We have three more folks.
Okay.
Gentlemen.
Do you want us to make a motion?
Yeah, let's have a motion to attach the stuff to that memo and ship it off.
Um, without further discussion.
Well, after we make the motion, we can have some discussion. I thought you said.
Okay. You thought I, you thought what?
I thought you just said it was great.
No, 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 I said me three.
Oh, me three.
Me three, okay. But yeah, I actually, I gotta look at my notes real quick. I don't think I have anything to add. I just wanted to be sure I knew what we were voting on here.
We're just, yeah, we're just voting to move it to the board of selectmen.
So I guess, should I make them? There's no words for me. I've got to figure it out on my own. I will make a motion to move the. Accessory dwelling unit resolution to the board of selectmen with the accompanying letters and paperwork that have been prepared by Laura and the commission.
So the memo of the 14th, the 14th of February, not, not the other one.
Oh, yes.
It's the one that you drafted dated February 28th, isn't it?
It's, I thought it was the 17th to the 14th or something.
I got it right in front of me.
Have a current date in that field or whatever, but it says date February 28th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple of different dates, like there's like the data was written and the date, but yes, the, the memo dated February 28th, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all right, now we've got it. Okay, discussion, Bruce.
I, I actually now I've had my minute to look at my notes. I don't, I don't really have anything to add, but I would say though, is that. You know, you're, this, it's a good effort to make a case so that the board would understand why we're trying to do this. I think we could wordsmith this. For another week or two or a month, but it's not going to change much. We're going to be trying to inform. And look for cooperation support from a group of people who know less than. The very, very little about zoning. And I'm, I'm concerned. That all they're going to hear is a drumbeat of some, you know, not what, not a large number of Simsbury residents, but. There are some folks who feel strongly that we should be moving ahead. But what are we gonna do?
You have to commit ourselves to do is to consider those. Items that are in question between the, the two things and decide whether or not to include them, but. That will make the board of selectmen very happy, I know.
Well.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, I have a little discussion here, hold on.
Hold on.
Um, one of the things he, so we received 19 written comments submitted from 18 residents, okay? So there's 18 comments and then the second paragraph after they, we said 10 Simsbury residents opposed opting out. And the next sentence says seven expressed that we should opt out. So that only adds up to 17. What did the 18th person say?
Uh, they didn't express an opinion.
They wrote to us without expressing their opinion?
Yeah, there was a, there was a comment that didn't say yay or nay.
Okay, I was just doing my math there and it didn't make sense. And I was just wondering, are we trying to hide something?
No. Okay.
Well, that's one more area though, that you could spend time on because. My recollection is at least a half a dozen of those written comments were the same. They were the same letter. They sent, they just used, changed the name on it and sent the same wording.
Yeah, and, and there was also some. Of the other side too, that were the same way.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get this going. All in favor?
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Okay. It passes six, nothing. Thank you. All right, the next item of business is the appointments to design review board. We're overdue on reappointing a couple of people. One is a reappointment, one is an appointment. We have a motion to do those appointments.
Can I just ask, I don't, I don't want to bog this down, but I'm just curious where these, I, I, I'm not super involved in the town politic part of things, but where did these people come from? I know Steve.
These were recommendations for, from the Democratic Town Committee. Steve is a replacement and I believe the.
Steve's are re.
Yeah, a reappointment.
And the other one is a, is a new person that they're putting up for an appointment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you don't have a bio or anything on them.
I think that we should get that in the future. I, I don't want to, you know, hold this up. Because I feel strongly about it when the, the homepage for the DRB. Outlines the credentials that people should be having when they're appointed to the board. It's right there. It's an engineering background, architectural design experience, et cetera, et cetera. And. I don't know, maybe everybody there has those criteria in their background, but I've seen some of their meetings on. Simsbury Community Television and. I don't think they're, they're a load of architects on that.
I would say that they're, my experience is they're, they're have an educational background that's appropriate. I know that our town committee. Nominating Committee does go through those things and looks for those criteria and I imagine the Republicans do as well.
Yes, we do. And being the liaison, the board of selectmen liaison for the past two years. Bruce, I would say that they were pretty well versed. They, they are architect, you know, background. Or some subset of that and pretty knowledgeable about materials, but I don't disagree with you. Sometimes the discussion goes off of that. You know, goes a different direction.
Right.
Yeah. So I think the, the point is just if we could get some information on these folks before we vote on them in the future, I think that would be appropriate.
Will I ask? Laura, when a recommendation comes in. From one of the town committees, can you please ask that they give some supporting detail for each of the nominations?
I can certainly ask.
Okay, I'm sure they'll do that.
Well, so I mean, I would feel comfortable reappointing Stephen, but we don't know anything about Kamala. Kamala Barasani.
Kamala. Barasani. We have to rely on the, we rely on the town committees to do the vetting.
No, it's.
Well, I know.
It's still our job.
Well, no, that's, that's what the board of selectmen does as well.
The board of selectmen doesn't look at these.
No, we're voting on these people.
No, but this process is the same as the board of selectmen uses to do, for example.
Some information on the candidate. They don't just.
To appoint people to. Say the zoning commission.
So Kevin.
And the town committees vetting.
Yeah, and I would say that what I'm familiar with is. Our nominating committee goes through and, and decides that this person might be an appropriate fit. For that position. So I do feel like it is up to the nominating committee. To put that person forward.
They put him forward, but we have to vote on him.
Right.
Without our vote, doesn't matter what the town committees.
That's correct, but I think we have to rely a little bit on other people.
We, we do, but we should at least know what their qualifications are because it does have very specific qualifications for designer.
So what would you say we do?
Well, just get a. Some, some bio on, on Kamala.
Do you want to table this until our next meeting?
Well, I was saying, you know, I'm fine with reappointing Stephen, but the unknown candidate, I think we should at least find out what the background is. And why the, why the Democratic House Committee thinks it's.
Okay, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's appoint, reappoint Steve, a motion to reappoint Steve and we'll table the other one until the next meeting. And we'll ask the nominating chairman to supply us with some background.
Great.
On her, that's easy.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Stephen Antonio to the design review board.
Do you have to put the date?
I'll second.
The dates are listed there.
Yeah, 12/6/21 to 12/6/2025.
And I think Diane may be seconded.
Yeah.
Bruce, yeah.
Yeah, you had your hand up.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those. Okay, she, he's reappointed six, nothing and.
And then I'll table the appointment of Kamala. Barasani.
We'll just, we'll just leave it there. And we'll bring that up at the next meeting, okay?
Fine.
Laura, put that in the, make sure we get that on the agenda the next meeting. And I will take it upon myself to track down our nominating chairman and. Get the, get the information.
Thank you.
Okay, the next. And the main business tonight is the sign regulation workshop. The last workshop, we worked our way with a couple of question areas. To, I believe it was past the electrical section, was it not? Nine, 9.6, start of signs in residential zones is where I thought we broke.
Based on the notes, I think you're right.
And we had, we had two questions. One was on. Asking the town attorney where the numbers for sign sizes came from because. A few of them were two square feet and some of them were three square feet. And we wondered whether those were just arbitrary or, or what. And then there was the section which we put in red, which had to do with the, I think it's the flashing signs.
Oh, that was not in this section though. That's right prior.
Yeah, that was, that was, these are the two things that we had left open. So we can go back to that after we finish the. Tonight. If we can get through. Okay, so we are at. Was it 9.5 residential?
9.6.
9.7 is what I have, signs and resident, oh no, I'm sorry. You're right. 9.6 signs and residential zones.
Is Laura going to put it up on the screen again? So we get to, oh, or, or Diane, who does it so well.
Oh. Okay, let's see.
Cause my print's too small to read.
Well, Laura.
I'll use the big screen.
Is there anything we're looking to change here?
Or we're just going.
We have gone through these once a long time ago.
Yeah.
Year and a half ago, maybe even when you were still on the board.
Yeah. So that's my question.
Yes, we're all looking, because what the town attorney did is I think he just. Compiled a bunch of different regs from different places and they weren't Simsbury specific.
Okay.
And so we're trying to make sure that it makes sense for us. And, and the reason for this, Jackie, is, is the federal court cases that restricted some of what we were doing previously.
Okay. I read through all these. I didn't see, I mean, I don't know how it formats, but. It seemed in keeping the home occupation signs. Seems in keeping.
No, a home occupation sign, wait a minute. One whole occupation sign of 13 square feet is a pretty big sign in the neighborhood. I don't have right handy. What are current sizes, but I would keep it whatever the current size is.
That's, that is big.
Yeah, everything else we limited to three square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, three feet, yeah, three square feet.
But three square feet's a little small, I think.
Well, not in a residential neighborhood, it isn't.
Well, look at, look at, what is it? The refinishing place on West Street? Gazza sign.
Yeah.
I don't think that's particularly objectionable and I would bet it's probably five or six square feet.
Yeah, that area is kind of unique.
Yeah, there. Yeah, but there's also, you know, on the corner, is it Ichabod that has a B and B on the corner, Ichabod and Bushy Hill? And they, they don't have any sign.
Nope.
And that, that got in there, if I remember hearing the legends, because it was deemed a home based business.
Right, they, they asked for no sign.
So.
Well.
Kevin, are you saying we should minimize the 13 square feet?
Yeah, no, yeah, that's, that's huge, you know?
I, I agree with that, but I think three foot, three square feet's too small.
Laura, do you have a recommendation?
And of love, other places you, you've opted for six as a happy medium. I don't know if that's something you'd be interested in. For it, because it is in a residential district.
So in all likelihood, it's going to be on the driveway near the road.
Well, and lower on that same page, it says the summary for signs in residential district, one sign up to six square feet in size. So. We can pull it from there.
Well, let's, what, we can just look at what our current reg is.
Now, wait a minute, that says you can have one sign up to six square feet without any.
Right.
Right?
Permit, yep.
And, I mean, we're not even consistent here.
Right, right.
That goes back to, this was just a compilation of stuff and it didn't necessarily make sense.
Yeah.
So it says one sign greater than 13, not to exceed 32 square feet. That's a special exception. So.
Right. I don't. I think we could compress this. Section to just the table D.
Okay.
Yeah. It seems fair.
We're, we're adding a lot of verbiage and. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I'd be good with that.
I'd be good with it. Yep, agreed.
Yeah, not maybe what we currently have.
Is that what we have?
I don't, I. I'm working with a sling here. My arm's not doing too well.
Oh.
Kind of slow when it comes to opening manual. We could call it up on the.
Laura, can you look up what our current? Table is? Easily? Well. You know, I, I'm looking at page 74.
Okay.
And. It's 9.1 is residential zones. And it starts with A, it's a, you know, small letter A.
Yep.
And it reads one nameplate or sign per dwelling unit. Giving only the name of the occupant or use of the premises not to exceed one square foot. And historic information signs not to exceed two square feet. Condominium or apartment complexes and housing approved under cluster zone, et cetera, et cetera. One sign not to exceed 20 square feet. Then there's categories for real estate signs, contractors, bulletin boards. Sign identifying or use granted by special exception. This is another category.
So.
Identifying a use granted by special exception.
So.
At the sign area, it does not exceed 32 square feet.
So is two square feet enough?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's worked.
Well, I don't, I don't remember hearing anybody complain about it.
No. I, I'd almost back up and say, let's, let's take this 9.6 and substitute our existing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Existing language for what's here.
9.1 is broken out like Bruce was saying.
And there's nothing in there that. I think is prohibited by this. By the. Court cases.
Okay.
We're, we're only allowed to set size and, and. Geometric things. We're not allowed to deal with content, but none of these are dealing with content.
Right.
I like that, Dave.
Can we do that, Laura? Just make that nine point, make the contents of 9.6 equal to our current.
9.1.
Okay, that deals with one, 9.7.
Signs in non-residential. Okay.
The comments on these criteria.
I'm not sure I know what a street pole banner is.
That's what we have in the, on Iron Horse and on Hot Metal.
Yeah.
They're banners.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Seasonal, usually temporary. Dave, is there anything that you think we need to add or has come? Come to our attention?
Um. No, I don't know. What, what does it say on the next page?
For non-residential?
Yeah.
It goes into wall signs?
Wall signs, canopy signs.
Projection. Window signs.
A window sign, I think is, I think that's the same wording as we, we use now, although I recognize the 25% of the window. I'm not sure I recognize the 35% figure, but 25%, this is sub paragraph H. They're allowing 25% of the total window space could be covered with signage.
That is what we can allow.
Yeah, this is basically.
Current one, oh, yeah. But this goes further, those talking about the merchandise button. I'm trying to figure out which one. Yeah, so our current one says. For the purpose of this regulation, merchandise displays in a window with a descriptive information which is not eligible. For more than 40 feet outside of the building shall not constitute a sign. Not sure how we came across that one when we noticed.
What was? If somebody displays merchandise in the sign, in the window. And it doesn't appear to be a sign, it doesn't count as a sign?
No, it's wording in relation to what's displayed, I thought. That was displayed.
Displayed in this window with descriptive information. Which is not, what, I mean, whose eye vision are we using? Not eligible for more than 40 feet.
I'll bet, I'll bet there was a case that we.
Where did that come from?
Somebody put something in a window.
Yeah.
I bet it was Vincent Sportshop, how's that? Anyway, that's gone. What about the next page?
Oh, yeah, actually that goes back. So you could put a sweatshirt on that has something on it. Does that count as a sign?
But it doesn't count, but it doesn't because it says it doesn't.
Well, that's in the current.
In the current regulation.
Right, so are we going to do the residential, the same as the current now, non-residential?
I, I don't see anything in our current regulations that again are prohibited by the statutes. So why should we change them? Or not the statutes, the court, court cases. We are not regulating content. We're doing size by district. So I think we're, we're safe from that standpoint. If we were to stick to our current. Non-residential. Regulations.
Well, yeah, both non and, and non-residential and residential.
Right, yes, just like we did with the residential.
Okay.
I mean, this is just all a bunch of detail that. Opens us up for things that we didn't think about.
So after that, Dave, is temporary signs?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along here.
Temporary signs.
Yeah.
Are we okay with signs not exceeding six square feet? I think that we're kind of saying that's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. This is temporary sign.
Yep. I'm going to scroll down unless anybody wants to see.
Okay.
Well, let me just, I'm ready to go, but. Our previous discussion about the signage in the. Non-residential areas. And now we're directly above temporary signs as reference to the wall mounted canopy. We had an issue with that. The, it was a, over on the Dr. Cannon's Medical Office Building on the south entrance. There's a canopy there that had. On the lower sort of, I forget what they call that, lower sort of four or five inch trim piece on an awning. Where they had writing on that, that when they turned the light on under the canopy, it created an illuminated sign. You could read the writing on the sign at night. Because it penetrated the awning material. And I don't know if they ever changed that. And now the businesses have changed in that building, but. I think there was a provision in our current regulation that spoke to that light not penetrating the canopies to create a sign or illuminating a sign. And I think that was worth having in here, but no, I should have made some effort to figure out if it was still there or am I mistaken?
There was, there was, that is in our reg somewhere.
Yeah, is, is it here, though?
No, it's not under non-residential. Laura, do you know where that would be?
Well, I think we should find it and put it back.
There's general, there's some general conditions that apply to everybody, so. Let's see whether it's there. I mean, right, we haven't talked about internally, internally lit signs being prohibited. Wait, we did, that's right, earlier we did.
Yes.
Less than, okay. Let's, let's keep that in mind, Bruce.
Yeah, okay.
Temporary signs, 30 days. Is 30 days long enough? I thought we had something like 60 or 90.
Yeah, we have 60 in our regs right now.
Can we rewind for one second? I just want to make sure you realize what we're, we're doing. Signs not exceeding six square feet are not regulated by permit. They are okay. That's what this is saying.
Right.
Okay.
And then these say 90 days. Up here, it says sign is removed after 90 days.
For seven and 12 square feet.
Okay, so the bigger ones, so then where's.
That requires zoning permit.
But then, this says temporary signs can be displayed up to a maximum of 30 consecutive days, two times per year. Is that on your victory?
They ought to be the same, whichever we decide, 60 or 90. Don't you think?
So our regs currently have 60, but those are only the ones that are applied a permit for under temporary signs.
It's like they.
Whether you have to get a permit or not, I think it should be the same temporal requirement.
So the 90 days is if it's a new business opening, so it looks like we've given them more leeway.
And also right now for our temporary business signs, we have it four times a year, not two times a year. And there's different rules for the nonprofits. Just to make it really confusing.
Well, we can't do that, though.
No.
Right.
I'm not sure. Can we do, we might be able to discriminate on nonprofits.
No, it has to be by his own.
Are you saying because a nonprofit isn't a message?
It's always for an event, though, so it's advertising signs. So I think you're gonna get into a gray area there because that is content. Who's backing it is content.
Yep.
Yeah, right, so we can't say, we can't say that. I agree. I think, I think we ought to make it 60 days and not 90 days.
Yeah, I agree.
And let's make it in, in all these cases so that a temporary sign can be 60 days.
Yep. So we have 60 days and temporary signs in our regs right now, 1B. And then I would just carry that over into temporary signs. It looks like it should be 2C and 2D, both have 90 days.
2B and 2C.
Are you in the old rig or the old rig?
Under our, all our existing, our old reg.
Right, but we're changing you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just giving you the records for right now.
It's confusing.
Okay.
We're trying to understand what.
It's gonna be the one making the change, so.
Okay, but we're making it here, 9.8B in the table. We're gonna make 60 days in both of those lines. Right?
Yeah.
And then, and then down below where it says temporary signs can be 60 days, can be 30 days, we'll make that 60 days.
Down below where?
Then C.
Duration and removal.
Oh, okay.
So Laura, you're saying that right now temporary signs may be displayed up to 30 days, two times a year, but right now we're allowing four? And now.
For businesses, we allow up to four. When we start dealing with nonprofits, it changes.
Okay.
And then there's also on town property versus business property because there's other restrictions if it's at the library per se.
Sure. So. That doesn't say here, though?
It's not included in this section at all.
Oh, so should we add that?
I do feel like the temporary signs, you know, only even if it's 60 days, twice a year, will be really limiting for somebody like the library that's constantly putting up new signs.
Yeah.
I see that being an issue. And maybe others, but that one comes to mind.
I think that's under E, they're exempt. Oh, no, that's not it. I read through and I thought it said that.
Yeah, municipal notifications are exempt.
And then signs on town, town property, no temporary sign will be erected or placed unless written permission.
I believe the municipal notification is actually the, the intent is they want to put a sticker on the sign. So when we go by, we know when it was placed instead of them actually pulling a permit for it. So we can actually do the sweep and go, this one's been up for longer than 60 days.
Okay.
So those are the signs that are six feet and smaller.
Okay, I'm I'm confused on the purpose and E, E is, is applies to all temporary signs. But it's so you know how long they've been up. Okay.
Is that like a, you know, road sweeping sign or, you know, whatever? I don't know what other signs they put up, but something like that.
No, they don't sweep the road for 60 days on.
Only thing.
But this, this is not municipal notifying us, it's notification to the municipal official.
That's what, that was my thought for it. Oh.
This is, I think that municipal notification heading is a little misleading. If we just deleted the two words municipal notification, then E would be fine. Temporary signs are exempt from standard permit requirements, but the date of erection must be written.
Well, the whole, this whole section's about temporary signs.
Right.
I think it's supposed.
How can they all be exempt?
Well, no, what we really mean to say there is the date. Delete everything but, after but. The date of erection of a temporary sign must be written in double link in the lower ending corner. That's what we're trying to say, I think.
I think it's supposed to be temporary signs that are exempt from standard permitting requirements. Must have the date of erection. Of the temporary sign must be written in.
That makes sense.
I believe that's the intent on that particular.
Okay.
Okay, but we still could take out municipal notification. That just makes it unclear. Makes it sound like the school board can do whatever they want.
Dave.
Well, they can, but temporary signs that are exempt from standard permit requirements.
They'll have the date of erection.
Now, we, we need to reword that.
Oh, we have.
Sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say.
Where, where are we regulating political signs as a temporary sign? This section?
Oh, we're taking them out. They're not regulated. And as political signs, that's content.
But you can regulate the size.
So then, yes, I, I think what you're saying is then, yeah, political signs do fall under. Some kinds.
Temporary signs, but you need more than 60 days, don't you? I mean, they go typically from Labor Day, well, I guess that's 68.
60 days.
We, no, we typically do 30.
They generally go up the end of September.
30 days.
So you're making it more permissive now and giving.
More like five weeks.
Yeah, so that's okay. So, but this, this need, he needs to be reworded. Temporary signs are, that are exempt from standard permit requirements must have the date of erection written in double link on lower right hand corner of the sign.
Yeah.
How about that?
Yep.
Yep.
You got that, Laura?
Doing it the old fashioned way, but yes.
Okay, that's funny.
On the right side, on the left side.
What'd you say?
Yeah, I'm just kidding around.
Okay, installation and maintenance.
Sorry, made a little bigger.
I thought, looking at F 3. I thought we were going to say that we could remove them without notice.
Well, maybe that's this next one. Unsafe, unlawful, or abandoned.
Okay, maybe that's it.
I'm gonna keep scrolling and just see if that's. May remove or cause to be removed the sign at the expense of the owner.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're giving them 30 days notice to do the, do it. If they don't, we can go after them. Take it away. Do you remember the billboards next to the thruway in New York State? When Rockefeller decided they were unsightly, they were every, you go down the thruway and there's just sign after sign after signs. He sent the state troopers out at one day and he removed them all. And he said to them, okay, now we'll start negotiating.
Must have gone over like a lead balloon.
It, he got away with it. Anyway. Abandoned signs, there's a lot of words there.
Yep.
That's very similar in intent to what you currently have.
Is it?
Yep, 180 days, I believe, is the, the same amount of times in which it's abandoned, which we give them to remove the sign.
Okay.
It might be more verbose, but intent wise.
Well, we did pay for the lawyer to do it, right?
That seems reasonable.
Okay, are we down to, are we through the abandoned signs?
Yeah.
Happy with that. 9, 10 permits, applications and review standards.
Oh, wait a second, Dave. I, I missed how we felt comfortable with giving 180 days to remove a sign.
Laura said that's what we do now.
Six months?
I believe it's.
Are you kidding? Why would you do that? Six months?
Seems like a lot, but if we've been doing it.
Unless I'm mistaken based off of my memory, unfortunately, I I don't have the regulation in, in front of me at the moment.
I don't either.
See abandoned signs in our current reg.
You don't see it?
It's under section nine.
Yeah, we're in nine. Temporary sign standards. Non-residential.
Yeah, that's, that can't be. It's six months. Oh, my gosh.
A long time.
Yeah.
Bruce, what would you want to change it to?
Well, if it's a topic that's covered under an existing regulations, I would say change it to no more than whatever we already have. And if it's 180 days, it may sound arbitrary, but I'd have that maybe to give them 90 days.
Yeah.
180 days, it just sounds ridiculous.
It does.
How do we define an abandoned sign?
Not being cared for is probably. You know, it's a sign that, it's an indication that it's not being cared for. Or it gets a sign that it's been abandoned.
Yeah, broken, disrepair.
Yeah.
But the difficulty is to me that normally the abandoned sign is like Hannah's signs and the next to Fitzgerald's, she's been gone from there for a long time and her sign is still up. And that's an abandoned sign to me.
Yeah. Yeah, so the ownership in Glastonbury should be notified that they need to get that sign down. You know, at some point.
Laura, will you, will that qualify?
What'd you say, Jake?
I want, I would like Laura to weigh in on that.
That's what my, my idea of the abandoned signs always were when businesses have moved out. I know a lot of times they like to use the sign casing and just replace the wording. I'm trying to look up our current regulations now as far as what we have for a time period. But I do more of the abandoned signs for business abandoned signs, as in wall signs or freestanding, not necessarily the temporary.
Right, and this is still under temporary.
This is all temporary, yeah. Yeah, I, I would say that 180 days is much too long. I agree with Bruce on that.
I do too.
I do too.
You scroll up. Diane, is this really just temporary?
Yeah.
We're, we're just in temporary.
Oh, it's removal of unsafe, unlawful or abandoned. So we're out of the temporary.
We're out of temporary.
Yeah. So you would say 90 days for abandoned signs? Three months is an awful long time.
Well, not when you're trying to rent a building.
True.
Well, that, you know, the, the ten, the guy that, what's his name that owns that property? Doesn't want to spend any time or money on the sign that's there. If he were to remove it, it would look, you know, there'd be a hole up there in the roof.
So Laura's looking for that? Should we go on to permit application and come back to that?
Okay, but, but you know, maybe there's a you know, some in between, like cover the, it's not a sign, is it, if there's no business advertised on it? It's just a structure. You know, if they were to put some sort of covering over the name of the business that moved out. I would think there's a way to get whoever moved out to pay for whatever that cost is to deal with their sign. But I think, you know, there's like, you know, put something like wallpaper over the name of the business that left.
Okay, well, let's, let's go on to permits and come back to this one, too. Nobody can, application requirements. There's a required information that rewired. A 9, 10B.
Oh, yeah.
Name, address, contact. This is all standard stuff, I hope.
Yeah.
Now. Are any of these requirements here prohibited by our? Are any of these requirements here prohibited by our? Court decisions?
I thought I thought it came from DeCresenzos office.
Yes. Well, you you can ask them what they're doing, but you can't. You can't um make a change in their um. Uh, sign content. Okay, I don't.
What about ten? It says a permit fee to be established from time to time. My resolution of sinsbury board of selectmen's shall be paid. It just seems slightly.
Who gets the money paid to who?
Occasionally, we're gonna ask you for some money.
Maybe take out the time to time?
Yeah, it just seems.
That's the application time. When you submit an application, you have to pay a fee.
To establish our fee schedule? I think that's how that was meant to say.
To be established by fee by fee schedule or something like that, but I don't from time to time just seems so like. You know, what do we feel like? We may come for money.
Yeah, take out from time to time, that's all. The comments in this section review standards?
No.
Now, and four here at the top, um, we've had some cases where. We permitted people to put their signs. Off their property with permission of the other property owner. For example, the Redstone Pub and and Dennis Jacobs' business. Um, there's now on a sign that's that's up at Hot Metal Street.
We must make some mention of. By. You know.
With approval?
Thank you. That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, but we should just see if the next section on nonconforming signs. Might speak to the ones that are already in place and we should stop doing that if. It's not been permitted under regulations, but just because we like the guy at Redstone and whatever, they get to do it. That's not. It's not good practice.
Well, no, they there was some sort of a decision. I think we voted on that.
Yeah, we voted on that to allow like I know the Riverview one for sure.
Yeah.
Well, I guess perhaps what we get, what what happened is maybe Dave Richmond who owned that building at the time. Applied for sign permit. For the Redstone and then Dennis Jacobs, I don't know.
What if we put in an okay, so like. Any part of the sign or supporting structure, you know, the property without the approval of the zoning commission. And it gives us the ability to. Just make it make exceptions.
Do they have a variance in the file for that? I'm sorry, that predates me.
I don't think it was done by variance. I think the the.
No.
The design review and zoning approved it.
I think we we must have gotten an application from Richmond. He owned it at that time.
But Riverview.
Riverview is the same thing. They're out on the street, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's on town property, isn't it?
No, I think it's on the corner lots property.
Yeah. So would we add that line, Kevin? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying we should give us the opportunity to make an exception.
Right. Um, but certainly shouldn't be done without the property owner's permission. If it's on another property, it has to be with the property owner's permission.
Right.
Two different things. This one's kind of like a sign that's kind of on the border.
Yeah.
Then we're talking about an off off site sign.
Right.
Right, completely.
Yeah, but maybe you give them offsite if it's within fifty feet of the property line or something. But I I don't want to see, uh, you know, our winery farm stand there on East Wheaton having signs on Hot Metal Street. No, that's that's a stretch. I mean, anybody could say, well, I'd like to have a sign, you know.
So Bruce.
Greater visibility. So what I'm saying, if you want to give them a little slack like Redstone, how far away is the sign from the building? A hundred feet, two hundred feet? But you gotta have some sort of a standard, not just. Winging it and see if, you know, it's somebody we really want to help out or not. And. You know, and then in Riverview. Uh, that sign, while it's not on his property, it's it's got to be within a hundred feet of his property.
Laura, would you put a distance in there or would you just say? It wouldn't, you know, a property located, a sign located off the property would need to get permission from the zoning commission?
I would like to historically see how we allowed it at Riverview, actually, just because I'm so unfamiliar with how that occurred. And how there could be a sign off of the property. I can understand it not being close to the building. You do have a bunch of temporary signs for. Businesses that are in back. Put their signs on the street sign.
But the parking, the Riverview parking is between the building and the road and Hot Metal Street. And so. The the Riverview sign is on Hot Metal at Hot Metal Street. And then there's a quarter of a mile of parking before you get to the building. And so, you know, it's a big piece of property. It's odd shaped and uh.
So let's let her look into that and come back to us with that.
So I'm curious on whether or not it's technically on their property at some point.
Right.
Wasn't Riverview part of Yakamore's property?
I think so.
And he owned the corner house, right?
No.
Yes.
He owned the gray house.
Let's let Laura.
Yeah.
Look into it for us. And then we can come up with a standard for that.
Yeah, because there there are cases where. Where it's appropriate.
Is there any other examples that you can give me that I could also look up just to see if there's kind of some kind of consistency on what was done previous to me?
Well, these were not only previous to you, they were previous to the previous people who had your job before you. So they go back a ways.
All right, previously, we'll just leave it at previously.
Yeah.
There's there's also the case of Farmington Valley Mall. Where when when the theater went in there, there was a lot of. Complaints that they were not allowed to display the. Theater pictures that are being shown, the movies that are being shown to somebody who was driving by.
Actually, that was their rec that that was their request not to not to do that.
Right? I don't remember that. I thought.
They actually came in, you know, they went, they had the um the globe thing was their sign and they did not ask for a marquee.
Okay.
Okay, so can we leave that? Can we table that section?
So it was um the courtyard and Riverview.
Courtyard.
Oh, that. And it doesn't just apply to Reds Redstone Tavern. That applies to all the businesses in the.
Dennis Jacobs.
They just did a second sign on the corner.
There's like three or four businesses or five that have their names on that sign.
Well, not all of the businesses that are in the courtyard did that, but there is a sign there.
I'm pretty sure Dennis Jacobs is on the side.
What's his business, Dave?
Home home repair, you know. Kitchens and baths and.
So we're coming back to. Section nine dot ten. Section four, and we'll see if we add a sentence in there.
So Laura, something just about permitting off off site signs. And I think it should be another section, not the four. I think the four applies to just going over your property line.
Okay.
Whereas, you know, five would be an off off site sign.
Yep.
Laura, have you had issues with nonconforming signs?
Pardon, as as for the actual section?
Yeah, have you had people, you know, not complying with this? Because I read through it. And it seems like what we would want, you know, you you get people up to conforming when certain things happen. But have you had other scenarios that don't fit this?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, I figured you would know.
Okay. Let's move a little bit.
You want to look too far? What was the head of this next section?
Nonconforming?
Uh, no, down at the bottom there, um, okay.
Up a little bit. No, that's done.
Okay, well, we'll see then see. Do we have all these positions correct too, Laura? Sometimes you're the planning department. I don't know what the correct term is for you guys.
CEO.
Yeah, but there's there's another term that was used earlier, not CEO.
Well, we are building official. Um, CEO and planning. Planning Department staff, maybe that's the correct term.
We often use planning department staff in those are current zoning regulations.
Okay, right.
Okay, next page.
Last page, people.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just we need to go back, though.
It's getting too enthusiastic. Where am I going?
No, no, once we finish this. Bless you.
Thank you. Sorry.
You see any changes, Dave?
Oh, we got that time to time again at the bottom there. That I would reword.
Under violations?
Yeah.
Right.
So this will, in effect, after ninety days, all nonconforming temporary signs have to conform.
Well, temporary, I don't think it matters, because don't they have to go up to ninety days anyhow?
Just think of all the sandwich boards. That's all.
Okay, I remember that. Okay, let's back up. We want to back up and. Question areas. We we do have a question on still didn't get resolved on the. Choice of two and three square feet where they. Where they exist in the first part of our regulation. And we should ask. Should ask the town attorney and try to get an answer on that. Now, the red, this is the main one.
Tell me what page you want me at. Where are we at?
Uh, you just had it.
Leave it's page seven.
There, the red one.
Oh, you wanted the red. Okay, sorry.
Yep, this is the one that we wanted to mark in red and come back and.
Gotcha.
We're gonna. This was the calculation and. My suggestion was to let's say that the minimum permitted message duration. Must be eight seconds. Period.
No less or just eight seconds?
Wait a minute, I didn't think we were gonna allow any changing message. Our our digital signs. I thought were in all the internally lit signs.
I'm just gonna scroll back up here just to see. Sign. Message. Yeah, there's a message duration. That's exactly what this is.
This is the digital this digital display signs, which we're only going to allow in. Along Albany Turnpike.
Well, digitally, maybe digitally displayed is different than internally lit.
Well, the digital displays are internally lit.
Where where did this? Is this new? Like, did this come because we got a request? Okay, Laura's saying yes.
Yeah, no, this just came from his review of of other. Other cities that had changed their regs, but doesn't mean we have to include digital signs at all.
Right, but we were we were those were included in. I thought in our discussion as internally lit signs. And we were going to allow them where we would allow internally lit signs.
Region, but yeah, I don't think you want a sign that changes every eight seconds.
No, I this topic was new to me when I saw this uh for the first time a few weeks ago. And it was identified as DeCresenzos work. I don't remember ever being in on a discussion where we were linking this. We, the zoning commission in our conversations, intended to link this issue with the internally lit signs. I remember for the, you know, many, many years, occasional discussion of internally lit signs and and push you and. Route forty-four, but not this digital.
Well, the digital signs are, you know, big color displays and so forth. And those were internal that science.
Right, but there but there's more to them than internally lit. Internally lit sign to me is just one that. You're lighting the letters and not having graphics on it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not ready for the graphics.
I I agree. Laura, do we have to include this?
No, you do not. You already further down, if you look at types of illumination, oh, I'm sorry, number three, digital displays. You already further down, if you look at types of illumination, oh, I'm sorry, number three, digital displays, the sign type.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Laura.
Laura, your sound is not clear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go, that's better.
We discussed sign types as digital displays permitted within a B3. I think the problem is the confusion on trying to include, like, digital menu boards along with including your signs. Your actual illuminated storefront signs versus your menu board signs.
You mean like a McDonald's type of thing?
Correct.
Gotcha.
I think that's where the digital display came from.
Well, permitted on premises. So we shouldn't need the above, we shouldn't need all the stuff in red.
You might not even want to add that they can be changed. But that.
Right. Yeah, that wasn't part of what we originally contemplated authorizing, it sort of got added on, and I, I don't see how we can tell, you know, Steve Antonio's tenant there Dunkin' Donuts, that their menu board can't be digital and flashing or whatever, if we allow them on 44. Now, I think it's a different thing when you talk about the internally lit signs, but maybe not. Maybe they're gonna say, you know, Steve Antonio will be on the design review board and get to review the proposal, but he could say, you know, if they're gonna have it on 44, my, my people need it too. My pizza shop needs it, you know.
I'd be comfortable leaving out that section.
Yeah, the whole message duration.
Yeah.
So you want to delete message duration?
The whole thing about digital and everything that smacks of digital and message duration, everything that's not just a simple internally lit sign.
So all of E is going away.
What's in red?
Well, yeah, because it says right here, internal illumination, including neon, must be static in intensity and color. I guess that's not wording, but it sort of implies that it's not supposed to be changing.
Well, did we intend to introduce neon signs out there?
That's a little bit further down, under two type, types of illumination, it's 2B. Internally illuminated signs are allowed only at properties which are Zone B3 and located within 850 feet of Albany Turnpike, and are subject to the following regulations.
Right, but internally lit signs doesn't say neon.
It says it in the.
Are you saying, Laura?
Yeah, Laura was talking.
So if you do type, types of illumination, number two, if you go down to room and numeral I, internal illumination, including neon lighting, must be static in test, intensity and color. It also says digital displays are permitted in accordance to these regulations, as the second one. It's on page seven.
But a digital display is one thing, I, I, it, I might be misunderstanding it, but what's in red appears that that would be a message. Okay, you're saying yes, okay. So they're not the same thing. So I think what we have is good, and we don't want to add the new.
So we're just taking out all of E, everybody's in.
Yeah.
All the red and a little bit of.
Yeah, until, until I see it here, I, I thought interim with signs or internally lit signs, it doesn't introduce neon. Neon is just plugged in here to broaden the, the reach of the new, newly authorized, you know, potentially newly authorized, you know, activity within 850 feet of, of Route 44, where I thought we were just gonna do internally lit signs.
But we do have to do something about the, the digital, because, you know, we can exclude them, but basically ZBA will approve them.
Well, Kevin, Laura was talking again.
Just, just to let you know, there's a bunch of different types of internal illumination for signs. They're internally lit, channel lit, there's internally neon lit. I don't know how specific you want to get it.
And, and there's also color displays that are displaying like videos. And those are big sizes now.
I think the static color neon lit signs within that proximity of Albany Turnpike are okay, but having a message of flashing, flashing message every eight seconds.
We already took that out. You can't do that. Right? We took out the red.
Okay.
So then.
And the question is, in a digital display, if we're allowing a digital display that's an internally lit thing, I don't know. I don't know how you control it if it's really a, a video board. You, you can't say it doesn't change.
I believe ZBA, when they approved their menu boards, they did it with the, I want to say they could change it no more than two times per day, two or three times per day. So they do it so they can change it according to like the breakfast menu versus the dinner menu.
That makes sense, but I mean, I'm just saying that these shouldn't all be done by ZBA instead of us.
Right. Now, when, those signs are on premises, right? They're, they're in the drive-in lane, aren't they?
Mm-hmm, right.
So do we really regulate signs that are in the, in the drive-in lane on properties?
Yeah, we can regulate that it can't be visible from the street.
Yeah, which is distracting.
Okay.
Or is that the only kind of regulation you want, based off of menu boards, for example, not visible from the street, otherwise it must adhere to the zoning regulations?
If we say digital display signs are, are now, you know, they're not permitted to be seen from the street.
Well, display boards. Well, the, the other one is your gas station pump signs.
Yeah.
You know, right now, they might want to change them every eight seconds.
Unconsistently.
Kevin.
Notice how much gas has gone up in the last five days?
Yeah.
So Dave, do you want to change digital displays are permitted in accordance with the regulations?
I think we're gonna need a better definition of what a digital display is before we go introducing it to this regulation. And I'm not sure if it's possible to get an example of somebody else's. But how much effort do we want to put into this?
A lot. Issues, this, people are very concerned about science, so it's important that we get it right.
Oh, right, but we could not do it at all.
Well, we know, we know we have digital display line, this, display boards for menus.
Right.
You know, and maybe they're not digital, maybe they're, they're just, what somehow, I'm trying to think, I don't go to Dunkin', don't know what this sign is like.
Other dynamic displays. I think if we say they're not visible from the street.
I like that.
Then they can do some, they can put their, their drive-in signs in the driveway, in the drive area, and people can order from them. And we shouldn't care about that.
By doing that, I'm sorry, Kevin.
Go ahead, go ahead, Laura.
By doing that, you'll, you'll be precluding, your gas station example is actually a huge one. All gas stations want digital gas prices. I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So that will always be visible from the street, otherwise what good does it do them?
Right.
So it's, it's a bad, it's a way. I don't know if you want them or not.
Well, we have, we have denied them so far.
You have.
Yes, as internally lit signs.
On the theory that they could go out every couple hours and change the numbers.
Now they can, they can do it by their little, yeah.
But we somehow, rather, it seems like we're, we're holding back the tide.
Well, I can try to find some different towns and different definitions for digital displays and bring them back to you.
That would be great.
Yeah, if you can check Avon and Chester.
So Laura, have you had a chance to find the abandoned signs, if we're going to that, but I don't want to move unless anybody's ready yet?
I was unable to find it. I know it's in there. I've read it so many times, but for some reason, I just can't locate it this evening.
Okay. I think our, go ahead, Bruce.
On my other, there's something about my other computer, I have a desktop, that when I go to the town of Simmsbury website and get the, the zoning regulations off the, off the website, from the PDF, that my version of, on my desktop computer, I can search that PDF, you can word search it. But when I use my laptop, which I'm using now, it won't word search on a PDF. But if you could word search it, which I always hoped, that was kind of an ambition I had when I came on the zoning commission, that we have easy access to a, a version that we could word search. But you could just word search for, you know, abandoned, or, you know, some words to that effect.
Absolutely.
Then you don't have to look through the whole thing.
Well, you also have the word version.
You might just have difference in your software between those two computers, because a PDF's PDF, so it's not gonna stop you from doing.
Yeah, right. Yeah, well, one of them, my desktop's about 12 years old, so, you know. I don't want to. To modernize the thing.
So we'll come back to those?
Oh, I was gonna say, I just did it.
Oh, you found it?
Well, I found it, it's coming up with a zero, abandoned.
Yeah, no fines.
Yeah. Oh, there's one, abandon, my spelling.
Going to be granted upon agreement.
No, it's marijuana.
Next one, is there an X one?
No, it's just one, one of one.
Oh.
Okay. So maybe we don't have that section? It doesn't exist?
Maybe it's under a different kind of terminology, such as when they unoccupy or a business closes.
Okay.
It wasn't in the sign section. I didn't see it at all in the sign section.
Yeah, maybe it, I don't know, do we really care if, if it's abandoned? I mean, it's, if it's, if it's not being taken care of, then we order it removed or something. And you give them three months or whatever.
Yeah, I think we can agree to the 90 days.
Yeah, and so what, what's abandoned mean? I'm, I'm not sure why we have a special category for abandoned. Is it gonna prompt the same action over again by the, by the staff?
Well, because you're not gonna remove an unavowed sign.
Right, you wouldn't have ordered it removed before, right, if it wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
Okay, what other areas do we want to review?
Oh, I can go back to that.
So you said you wanted the attorney to weigh in on two or three square feet, so we could be consistent?
Well, we had, when we went through this, we said there are several different specifications for sign size, especially the two and the three feet. Where did those numbers come from? And are they, is there some magic in them? If we made them all three square feet, would it be?
They're as arbitrary as they seem.
Well, you want to talk about arbitrary, the current size, you have no more than 24 by 30 and, and one, 30 inches, one and a half inch border with a one-eighth inch inline border, one quarter from the one and a half inch border with a quarter conque detail and the inside edge of the trim with one and a half inch inverted radius corners.
Oh, my word.
So Laura has to go and measure all those things.
Absolutely.
All right, so how are we gonna complete this?
So we said we were gonna use the current, and that was current for what?
So I think we have to come back to some stuff, Dave.
Yeah, that's what I said, how are we gonna complete this?
We can put it on the agenda for a different time. There's no timeline on this right now. We don't have a public hearing scheduled. Once the draft is up, then we would go forward into the public hearing process. I know you guys have been chewing on this for a while, trying to work it out. It was a larger document, I think, than we expected to get it back.
Well, let's, let's take the changes that we put in tonight, if you can ask Joe to revise it, or you can revise it, whoever.
I like your initial idea.
And we'll put up the, the revised document and take a look at it, and have a question answered on the square feet spec. Was there another spec that we wanted him to weigh in on, another?
Oh, but I think as long as, there has to be some further communication with DeCrescenzo. He should be asked for his recommendation on what we should do with the town center code and the Hartford property code for the signage regulations, because these should be pretty similar. And they're not.
No, they're not.
Okay, well, we'll ask him for that too. All right, it's 8:30, almost.
Okay.
Anything else?
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, if it came, we would act on it.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second, thank Kevin. All in favor?
Uh, good to see you guys, thank you.
Okay, see you in a week.